It is 6:02 PM on September 10th. I'd like to welcome you all to the Rattlin Town School Board meeting. Everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I get a motion to approve the agenda, there was a request to move the RTS field discussion up to the beginning.
Can you hear that?
I think it's feedback on her computer. Underneath, teacher, staff, and community comments. So I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the change.
So I'm with.
Thank you, Colin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, staff and student highlights. Is that you, Mike?
We didn't have a sign up for tomorrow.
Okay.
We opened, yeah, we, Mike puts a sign up and nobody signed up, but Mike Rowe is here.
I'm here to part with Kelly's part and stuff. And if you had any questions for me. We are going on our trip tomorrow. We leave at 8:30 in the morning.
Did you camp Tinge Cook?
Yep.
The seventh graders?
Nice.
Beautiful weather.
Yep.
Beautiful weather, yep. Everything's gonna work out just nice for us. So it'll be great.
I hope everything does.
And thank you for all your support with that.
We hope to continue. Teacher, staff, community comments. Anybody interested in speaking? Seeing no one volunteer, we'll move on to the RTS field discussion. So I believe the reason this is on the agenda is because one of the priorities of the board is to make sure all of our fields are safe for our athlete, our student athletes, and kids at recess, et cetera, et cetera. And so we just wanted to hear what's being done to make that happen. And so we invited Kelly, Tria, who's our head custodian, and Mike Rowe, who is the athletic director, to speak about it. So I don't know who wants to speak first. Kelly? We couldn't hear you, Kelly. Could you, I just increased the volume, so hopefully that'll help.
Is that my room?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Um, we're working on a real field, uh, we've seeded the grass.
Uh, we, we're having, sorry, Kelly, you're going in and out a little bit.
Okay, how about now?
It's good now.
Okay. Um, over the last two years, we've been reseeding the field, trying to get it to a better base on the field. We've also been rebuilding the softball fields and doing the edges. I came up with an idea of instead of putting, we do wood chips every year on the playground, even, I mean, even though we've got a good base. So I came up with an idea to use that money every other year to do field improvements, um, or be to bring in some topsoil, to take that mound out of the backside of the shortstop in second base, or to do some grub work or something like that. So, you know, ideas there. It does get hard during the summer or toward the end of spring. And as a coach myself, I think I played on 90% of the fields I played on were hard. We do have water on the building, but then it's pretty fine to just bare it and hose it down.
Could you repeat what you just said? It went out again.
All right, let me try. On the, um, the water part?
Yeah.
Hosing it down?
Mm-hmm.
Well, so our field does get hard. It sits out there and it bakes in the sun. The only thing that we could do to improve that would be to have somebody literally stay out there and hose that down to really soften up that ground. Being a coach myself, I know 90% of our field we played on this year were rock hard.
I couldn't, we couldn't hear what you just said about 90%.
90% of the fields he played on were rock hard.
Okay.
Yes. So I'm sure Mike, but I didn't.
I think, what is the issue with the field? Like, is there an issue with the fields?
I mean, I think for the softball field, I mean, it is, I mean, rock hard from like, beginning of May, you know? And it's not that it's not, it's, it's, I mean.
It's clay, right?
Yes.
Yeah. But it's like, I mean, you, we can't have the girls play, like, they have to wear pants in order to play, like.
Do you still have the dragger?
Yeah, he drags it before the games.
So... That used to, that used to work for me anyways. I used to drag it, well, you know, all the time and before a game.
The only thing you could potentially do is bring in more clay.
Right.
When we redid that field before COVID, we brought in the clay with the idea that if, if it didn't play then, or whatever, we could add more clay. That's a costly expense. That's about a thousand bucks knowing, because I deal with it up at the park. So it's not an easy, and then talking to the highway or paying for the shipping of that getting brought over. I mean, there's a cost to it. It's not cheap. You would think clay would be cheap, but it's not, being a byproduct of slate. But that's something you could do and then try it from there. He does drag it before every game. It does sit out in the sun and bake, without a doubt. And like Kelly was saying, he plays on, you know, hard fields all the time, being a varsity softball coach. So that's one thing we could try to do, is to bring in more clay.
That's what I would do.
Which is fine. That's just an expense that, hearing what he had just thought as far as alternating to pay for that. In speaking with the field, like Kelly said, I've, someone has spent a lot of time on that backfield that's in this room. And with seeding and different things over the past couple of years to get it where it is now. The hump that was there when we moved the field was going to be taken care of this summer because we thought they were going to be doing the ditching. And you, you know, we had to move you, but nobody bid on the thing. So it didn't, it was gonna kind of happen at the same time. And that work outback did not happen as far as the, whatever it was, the water thing, whatever they were gonna do outback by digging up right along the baseline and whatever that project was that Kelly had. The stormwater, yeah, the stormwater project.
So is that still slated to be done, or?
Nobody bid on it.
But it still needs to be done?
Well, the state came back, because I was supposed to sign something I got today, Kelly. I forwarded it to you because he is homesick. And the, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, but they are going to put it out to bid again next year, correct? Hoping that they will get somebody to bid on it.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Kelly.
Type in the chat.
Old commuter, old computer. They were gonna bid on it again this year, and hopefully they get bids.
So I can help take care of that problem next summer regardless. That's not an issue.
What is the issue with the softball field? Because I, I don't know.
It's just hard as a rock. It's really unsafe, like, and I, I mean.
So it's unsafe, so how do we fix it? It's just more clay?
I would say we would need to look at a different type of clay. That clay is like, it, I mean, we literally tell our kids, do not slide, like, they are not allowed to slide. And we have to tell other teams when they come, do not slide. Somebody's gonna get hurt.
Because it's so compact?
It's just hard. It's just hard. And it's, I don't know, I think it's the type of clay. I don't know, I mean, I don't know if, what, I don't know.
Yeah, we've got the, that from Hattica.
That's where we got it.
That's where, that's where I get it. I'm guessing the only thing is, is to get a Harrell.
And I'm not saying everybody, nobody's doing, I mean, Mike does a great job.
Dig down.
Well, there's a person that comes in and does that road until twice a year.
Yes.
For reasons I don't really wanna, you understand. And we try to maintain that as best we can, but it hardens right back up. So, A, we could look at a different material.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the hardest.
Or adding another layer, maybe that will.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the fix is, it just, I.
Soften it up, because that's the same stuff that we use. I use at the park and I don't have that problem.
I would just add some more to it and.
We can definitely try that. That's, I mean, but that, that's up to you and that's an expense.
Is that not something that we budget for?
Well, when I get the tandem truck at the town, it's five or 600 bucks. And that will cover a quarter of it. So you're talking, well, it could be two to three tandem truckloads to put down a new layer, a three-inch layer, or whatever you want to put down. So a thousand, a little bit more, whatever the price is at the time. It's not one dump truck full and then you're done. It's multiple truckloads of clay.
Kelly?
Can't hear you, Kelly. I don't know if you want to try to call in on your phone?
Right now, there's money in the budget to do that. Almost $1,000.
There is another softball field up at Rattlin Town, or the Northwood Park. Is that not suitable for?
Which one are you talking about?
The softball field that's on?
That is the school property?
Yeah.
That one, we used that original and then they brought, it basically just turned into dirt. They brought in some others. That's a sand pit up there, up on that part. It's basically all sand. The whole park is sand. But that, they brought in whatever they brought in years ago. We, when we redid it, we had to move it because a neighbor was concerned on the other, was on the other side. So we moved it. And then they added to it because it was basically school. So whoever contracted with you has brought whatever in. I didn't pay attention to it because it wasn't me. It's, it's now like a dirt kind of infield at this point, dirt, sand, whatever's up there.
Is that still okay to use for middle schoolers, or?
The bases are different.
Yeah, the bases are different. Adult softball is way different and they use it quite often up there.
But they don't use it during the school year much, I don't think.
During the spring, oh, they kick off fairly early.
They just sent you a message, said they can't hear you.
Can you hear me now with my phone?
Ooh, look at that.
Yes!
So, that's what I was saying for the wood chips. Instead of doing wood chips, that's what we would use that expense for, is to bring in more dirt and stuff like that. I thought, you, you just couldn't hear me.
Yeah, no, you sound a lot better now, thank you, Kelly. So you're, there's no way to switch out the bases up there instead of the extra expense?
We could, but we could, I mean, that would be up to you if you want to play up there.
Well, I don't play, so.
They're using a different, they're using a different base. I mean, it's not the greatest field either. I mean, they don't, they, you know, they maintain it. I don't maintain it. You don't maintain it.
They, they don't go through us. They go through, they just fill out a facilities form now.
Right, but they still pay you to use the facility. He pays you like three grand a year to use that field.
They might pay the school, but, yeah. I don't, I'm not.
You know, the school.
We don't, we don't deal with it anymore. So I don't know what, what it is. They go through, they fill out the facility.
I would just resurface that field outback.
And, and we can look into that and find a better surface. As long as, I'm just saying, it's, it's costly. So if you have money, like Kelly's proposal, then we can make that work. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
I mean, and, I mean, it's beautiful in the beginning, like it's a nice field.
That's when it doesn't harden up.
Like a week later.
It hardens up.
It hardens up. It's like concrete. It is, it's, and it's, I just feel bad because like, at that age, you don't want them to be afraid of, you know, of.
Never wanting to play again.
Yes.
Maybe a little more aggressive rake, if we get a different rake.
No, you, no.
Just needs more. So, Kelly, are you in agreement too, that we have in our, we have enough in our budget just to get more clay?
And what?
That would be, that would be the best bet.
Okay. And then would it still be necessary to water it down?
I think if, and again, I do this at my own field. I go out there and with a hose, spray it down before we line it and stuff like that. But again, that takes time too. So if we had some volunteers that wouldn't mind doing that, we have the hose out there, so people could spray it down.
I mean, it's just naturally gonna harden itself.
Yeah, that's our, and I, I'm all for facilities, but with our limited resources, and it's not like other places that don't get traffic. I mean, that's our playground too. When the kids are out there, it's just gonna get run on.
They're out there all the time.
And I, and we don't have the personnel that, it should be watered every day if you go to, you know, nice Hartshere courts. But we don't have the personnel and a sprinkler system to like, do we really want to chuck clay at it that's gonna get hard? Or should we contemplate, you know, I, I'm, just my personal experience the last couple of days, like, walking up to Northwood's not bad. It's great facilities up there. It's not kids running on the field all day in school, so, I mean. I'm all for making it better, it's just a matter of are we throwing some more limited resources that we need everywhere?
But there's still work that has to be done at the Northwood one, because we still have to, would, you would have to remove the mound and move the mound differently and all the bases.
I would add the clay and get a more aggressive screen.
Okay.
That's what I would do.
We can try.
You can, you can try it. I'm, I'm, like, I brought up my, we brought up our like, four-wheeler and spikes. And when it gets hard, that drag does nothing, like it's, it's like, it, no, it doesn't matter. You can get as much.
Been like that for years, with every, every time that we had it here for years. And, yeah, it gets hard. It's a clay field.
So then we need to do something.
Every clay field gets hard.
Then we need to, we need to find.
A different solution.
A different type of clay, because not all clay fields get.
We can look into that.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna put a load down, it doesn't, you know.
Yeah, like look into like that beam clay or whatever it's called.
It's just.
It won't be just the clay though. We, we will have to definitely get a, a nice york rake.
Yes.
So, and that will help it.
Thank you very much for your time and expertise on that. Anyone else have any questions before Kelly and Mike sign off?
Do you want to do the five-year plan? Any questions about that while he's still here?
Just that it gets in the budget. I, I don't have any questions on the five-year plan. Does anyone else, right now?
Nope.
Thank you, Kelly, feel better.
Thank you, Kelly.
Do you have any athletic questions?
No problem, glad to help.
Thank you.
Do you have any athletic questions that I'm here that you might have for middle school?
How's it going this year?
Good. Team's got off to good games yesterday. We have good participation.
Where'd the kids go today?
Uh, that was cross-country there at Otter Valley.
Oh, okay.
So we have, uh.
I saw the flat-nosed bus drive in, I'm like.
Oh, is that what they had? Uh, yeah, I don't know, whatever bus picks them up.
Oh, okay.
We have 13 kids running in grades five through eight, and then we have two kids from the city that are on our team. And Amanda Carmichael does that, or Amanda McIntyre.
Awesome.
So they travel every Tuesday. There's no home meet. So they're going to Bennington, they're going to Tepper, they go.
So they're not at Northwood at all?
They, the Northwood meet would have been on the third, which would have been their second day of practice. That's when the high school, they follow the high school meets and they run before the high schoolers or after them, whichever, however they set it up. So the high school meet was on the third at the park. We had the big meet. But they had just started two days prior to that, so they were not able to run. Their meet was early this year rather than later. Otherwise, they would be on the road to all the other meets, just like the high school is. High school hosts one home event. And it just happened to fall early this year at the park.
Great job on the celebration this, this last year. That was fantastic. Fantastic, very good.
Otherwise athletics are, you know, we expect to field all of our teams that we have in the past, which is great. And keep up our MOU's with our corresponding towns that, so that we can give a place for the kids to play that want to participate. It's worked really well and we will continue to do that. You know, I'm just asking if people want to donate to our Booster Club for banners. That's a great way to help offset the cost of athletics. Since we have predominantly 75% of our middle school kids that, or higher, that participate in some form of a school athletic program. So you do need to know that. There are quite a high number that participate, at least one. And then there are multiple that do three. So that's really one great thing about school is the number of kids that are participating in our athletic program. And that continues to go strong, so. Other than that, I, unless you have something, please do not hesitate to let me know if you have any questions or, or what have you in that department, so.
Well, thank you.
No, no problem.
Thank you.
That key is terrible.
No, you gotta pull it out just a little bit.
It's just, you gotta, I knew the key. I did it like that. She was, she was so mad at me.
Listen, I, after the 13th time of trying it, every day after.
You just gotta, a little twist.
Just a little bit and twist.
It's been a, what are you gonna do? You keep it in your car if you want.
I have it in the car.
Oh, all right, well.
I stole it.
Just a little bit and twist.
All right, we're gonna move on to the PCB update. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
Turn the fan off, I'm dying over here, Mike.
So PCB update. We, huge thank you to our teachers and staff, especially those whose classrooms were impacted. Couple of days before school started, they still weren't ready and teachers were flexible. Other teachers opened their classrooms for Spanish, library, whatever's needed. Kate Manavell's made adjustments. Ashley and Liz in her PFS room have made adjustments. We just, we have a great team here. Kids are understanding. So before Labor Day weekend, we had a company come to do just where the remediation work happened for PCBs, to clean out the air filters, et cetera, because they wanted those to happen right away. So that happened and then testing happened. And then they're just starting to get the test results now. I did speak to Evan briefly this afternoon, but I'm waiting until he puts some of that in writing. So I will share that some of the numbers were, didn't, were not reduced. And he said that's not a surprise because once they extract the PCBs, it takes a while for all of that to filter out through the air. So we had to shut the carbon filters off. So the extraction happened, shut the carbon filters off. Air vents were cleaned out and then the air quality testing happened. So some areas, the PCB numbers went down and a few of them, they went up. And he said that was expected. So they plan on coming back. Craig plans on coming back on September 26th to do another air testing. And then we will share the results. So again, I, that was just a verbal conversation. Kelly didn't hear, nobody's heard that except for a brief conversation with Chris today. So I will share that when it's written.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? And I know it's happened to other schools in the state. Why is this, we finding all this stuff out or doing all this stuff at the last minute? Like, there are schools that have shut down and put tents out in their, their place because they had issues. So I'm saying for here, how come we didn't, we knew we were doing the testing and so how come that didn't happen sooner?
So.
So we wouldn't have to, so we didn't have to dance around.
So these are things that are out of our control. We are at the whim of contractors and the states. And so the state sets the timing and the testing. They come in and then when the contractors are ready, the contractors come in. We do know that, as expected, that funds are starting to dwindle. And so they've had to reprioritize. And so there are individuals, you know, there's other schools in our SU that were ready for remediation mitigation that got bumped out because they weren't seen as, as high risk, higher risk as other schools. And so there's been a bit of a shuffle. So they're just, we have a very few contractors that are working, but it really has nothing to do with us in terms of scheduling. We really just.
No, I was just.
All right, I know, just saying that, but, just because I think there are community members who ask about that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But like I said, we are at the whim of a lot of other forces with this because just to do the, you know, the mitigation three days before the start of school would not have been on our calendar or schedule, obviously. And I think that's part of the frustration, you had all summer and then, but.
Yeah, I just, you know, when somebody happens. I just won't.
Yes.
And I won't.
Yeah, so the testing happened at the end of June when it was very hot, you know, close to 100 degrees for consecutive days. So a lot of doors, windows were shut, we don't have screens. So when the testing happened, then we got the results back July. There was various people on vacation, post-rescheduled meetings. Then in August, they scheduled a meeting. And, and they said, we can do this just before school starts. And I think we were frustrated that we had these numbers, you know, earlier in July. And now we're waiting for contractors.
So is every, is everything open now or no?
No, so it's, um, the PFS room can only be used for students seventh grade and up. The guidance room cannot be used. So unfortunately, we don't have a school resource officer now. But the good thing is that Ms. Manavell has been able to use that room, the SRO room. Spanish can't be used by preschool students, but the same with the library. But Spanish and libraries, since they had remediation work, a lot of things happened during school, the start of school. They were going into classrooms because it was, it was a mess. So they have worked overtime, weekends, et cetera, putting their classrooms just recently back together. So preschool can't go in right now to library or Spanish class. And I think I hit all. And then nurses, preschool can go in briefly, same with the main office.
Well, good job for all you're doing, dancing all this stuff around.
Yeah, and you know, because you're trying to get classrooms ready. And I just said, I'm glad that we didn't have in-service here. Thanks, thank you Wes Rattlin for hosting.
All right, CLA update. They, I left messages and emails with the listeners, finally heard back and it said, nothing to report. So as far as I'm aware, nothing has moved with the reappraisal process. And I specifically had asked, you know, if they had gotten anything in writing because they were waiting for something from a lawyer or from the state, I'm not really sure which, of basically saying, if we got an appraisal, a reappraisal before the state ordered us to get a reappraisal and then our turn came up the following year, would that negate our reappraisal that we went, you know, did early and make us have to pay for it again? And they were verbally told no, that that would not happen, but they were waiting for it in writing. So I don't know if they've received it or not. They did not share that information. They did not share whether or not they had finished the reappraisal application. So I also don't know if that has been submitted or not. And I don't know where we are in line for it. I have asked our liaison to the Select Board to ask them at their next meeting so that we get a little bit more of an update because I also looked at all the minutes and there has been nothing to report in the minutes either at the Select Board meeting. So I am hoping for some news next month. The next up is a board budget workshop. Our board has discussed having some type of a board workshop to really do more of a deep dive on the budget, maybe learn about more of what the board has control over, talk about what's going on statewide and how it's affecting our budget. And potentially inviting the public to be part of that, you know, exploratory discussion as well. So just wanted to kind of have that discussion now. And my hope is that we, if we are going to have something that the public is, I mean, the public's always welcome, right? But if it's more of a public engagement type of discussion, But if it's more of a public engagement type of discussion, that we get the date tonight, because the circle article due date is September 15th, and that issue will probably come out early to mid-October. And the next one's not going to come out till early to mid-December. So it would be really helpful if we had a date in this issue that's coming out, so that people know about it, and... Because it's, you know, we're sending it to all registered voters, I believe, in Rutland Town. So it would be great to get that information out. So I, I think we need to find, discuss, and decide on what the focus is of the board workshop, and who we want, you know, is it going to be an engagement or really just a discussion amongst us, more or less? With public comment as always welcome, and the date.
I would think we would have, want to have a discussion of ourselves first, before we...
So what kinds of things do you want to have at the board workshop?
What's that?
What, what were you hoping that our board workshop would contain?
Well, we don't want to follow Governor Douglas's ideas, do we?
You mean Scott?
Scott, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, my, my son is, I got a picture on here. He was down in Virginia, sorry, and he met the governor down there.
Oh.
It's like out in the middle of nowhere in Virginia.
Oh, wow.
Anyways, so, yeah, I, I just... I'm not supposed to try and... Talking about Governor, sorry.
It's okay.
But the other, the other article too that I read, that you sent along...
The commentary?
Yeah, that was depressing as well. It's like, basically give up all your control, let the state take over.
Yep.
We don't want that, yet.
Colin?
I mean, it'd be nice to, I think, potentially two meetings. One, we're going to be discussing the budget all, we're coming into our budget season. But it'd be nice to have a more interactive discussion with the community if they want to show up. And that's the whole idea behind the workshop, is to really tackle the parts of the budget that, that are within the control of, of this local board that they're voting in. And then when it pertains to pieces that we can move on the table, and they can understand how the budget works by the time we get to town voting day. I think a lot of members of our community learned a lot of new language this year, probably still don't fully understand the CLAs, the per pupil costs. It's, and I think our, our central office is working on some, some language that we can get help. But I think a lot of people are, it's a steep learning curve. But it's not just A plus B equals C, and here's your budget. It's, it's a lot of moving parts. As you guys may or may not have seen today, the letter that Scott sent to all of us at the VSBA, there's another $69 million hole, shocker, in the Ed Fund. So for flatlining, we're looking to send that out of the gate. And there's supports there with us, which it isn't. When it comes to budget time, no one's, no one's coming down here and helping us. So we need to get the messaging out to this community, which we did this year, but if, and that's really, if we can encourage more people to show up and understand the moving parts. And hopefully, they can take away how good of a job we do fiscally here, how important it is, but also maybe bring that to, you know, hopefully influencing change on the things we don't have control over. So, you know, we're going to do a lot of work at the central office level to get that language out. And it's reeducating ourselves on these terms. I think, you know, budgets were pretty easy up until last year. And just like when Act 60 hit in the late 90s, it was three to five-year uproar. And as Governor Scott also told us, we're going to go into our budget season November, December. We still don't know what's coming down the pipe when they get back in the session. So I think I did a poor job last year of anticipating what was going to happen, and I'd like to be more on the ball. And for whatever, they probably won't listen to us, but at least we can push back and say, "This is the effect it's having," instead of, you know, we got to March last year, and it was like everything we thought we had lined out was completely inaccurate, and so if we can be a little more prepared. And hopefully, I think, I guarantee some of the members that were here last year will be, will be back, but hopefully get more, so they can fully understand. I appreciated all the support from the yeses and the other side no, but, you know, we're going back into the same year, the next four years, and the more people can know what they're spending money on, the better off we are, so... I mean, ultimately, before January, I think is important. Because it's kind of, you know, it happens pretty quick from the beginning of January, and all of a sudden, it's March, and we're at voting day, and do we get enough information out to people? And I don't want to be here in June doing the same thing we did this year.
Either, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I feel like, you know, if, I don't know if a really deep, deep workshop, as far as like, open to everyone, is like, going to deliver much movement? But, but I think, I feel like maybe sometime between the couple of drafts, you know, encourage people to tune in, to kind of hear the discussion of the first draft, and then maybe try to have that workshop kind of between those two, so we don't get to our final draft, and then it becomes, goes out in the town, you know, town, you know, letter or whatever. And then it's like, "Oh, no, this isn't going to work," because we've been working on that budget for four or five months. You know, there is a lot of opportunity to be a part of that discussion, kind of prior to the final few weeks. Because I'd love to hear the insight and feedback and things like that, but, you know, time is of the essence as well, even though we're only, you know, that we're still six months out, you know, or whatever the case may be. So, you know, I'm afraid that if we get too caught up in a lot of workshop discussion, and that it could really, it could bog us down more than move us forward. And, you know, the accountability, it ends with the five of us, really, you know? We can take all the feedback we want, but at the end of the day, it's the five of us that got to sign that budget and go to the voters with it, so...
So, according to Louis's timeline, the next meeting, we will discuss priorities and what our thoughts are, on give him some guidance as to what we want the budget to look like. And then the November meeting would be the first draft of the budget. So would we want to have, you know, maybe just invite the public and let them know that, that that's what is going to be happening? So if they want to hear the process, just, you know, come to our meeting in October and hear us discuss priorities, and our November, the first meeting in November will be that, and then decide if we need another workshop, or...
I mean, I think the workshop will be useful in terms of how do we, how do we get the message out on what is, what's the guts of this budget? You know, what do we do, what decisions, what hard decisions do we make? You know, what are we doing to move Rutland Town forward, because we have to continually do that, right? So, we're either getting better or worse, you know? You're not just staying the same, right? I guess the question is when... It will get, it always gets hectic around, from Thanksgiving to the end of the, you know, and, you know, so we'd have to be vigilant about when we want to do that piece of the board.
Abby, did you have anything to add?
No, I'm good with anything. I think the more we get out and the more we take input, I think the better off we're going to be at the end.
Just thinking, I mean, potentially, the workshop is, when we slated for a first draft, December, November?
November.
So like that December meeting, kind of like what we did post-Hace last year after the first budget loss, is like walking through the property tax changes. I mean, I think it's the same board makeup. I hope you guys know what my priorities are, it's not cutting. It's keeping what we have, making it better, which is going to unfortunately look at increases this year. And that, that would be by, if there was a workshop tonight, like what's the priority of you? Is like, keeping Rutland Town where it is and expanding it into the future? And if that's the budget, we got to, if that's all of your goals, then we explain that to the public now, which is what I'm doing, and then show them what it means. And I think we did that really good after the fact, after the first shot down. And again, that was when more of the language came out of what's what, so just doing that in December. Like, here's the impacts we know is coming. Keeping in mind, in January, the upheaval is, is coming, but here's our anticipated tax changes. And the people in my pillar aren't throwing Rutland Town a bone, I can assure you that. I think just keep messaging that, because the folks who appreciate this building, the product we're putting out, you know, will show up, we just got to get them to understand. And the folks that don't, instead of just saying, as we heard last year, "I want austerity, I want cuts," this is our little pot that we can control, and you think cutting at $25,000, like, that makes you feel good, but the impact it has on 300 kids is massive, for that little dollars we can move. And the big dollars you think we can move, we can't. There's that $30 million program we didn't control, like the stuff that we can't cut out. So the only things we can is just to, you know, they really need to understand what we can and can't do. And if that's, you know, that's their direction, that's the direction of them, but that's, you know... I don't, I fully don't think most folks still have a grasp of what is in our control and what isn't, and the impacts of 100 grand to your tax bill is negligible, but to, to the school is, you know, we're literally talking about not having enough money to put clay on a field. So little dollars that we do control have a huge impact. So kind of the messaging we did after March, is kind of just work our timeframe backwards.
So, I'm not sure I'm hearing that we want to have a separate meeting. Yet. Is that consensus?
I would be happy to do another one. I wouldn't say you guys all have to be there, we can warn it. I'd like to do a presentation, kind of like some of the ones we did towards the end. I think there's value in, I don't want to take over two hours of a board meeting, and they have one meeting a month.
I mean, I guess the question is, when do we do this? Because we have a pre-town meeting in January where, you know, people know that this is where, if they have questions, they should come to hear about the town budget and the school budget. Like, are, are you thinking about a presentation prior to that?
Like December, that way a pre-town meeting can be better. So they know. The more information, the quicker we get, and what, things will change between there and legislation coming in. And like I said, everyone doesn't need to be there, but I think impacting that time, plus it's the winter, I don't have a lot to do, so... But just doing that, because it just starts running so quick from the end of January, and next thing you know, it's March. We don't, February's a short month with the vacation in the middle, like... And fielding questions the night before town meeting day is, like, we're not changing the budget on Monday night. What are we doing here?
I mean, I feel like timeframe-wise, if we look, look at like that two-week window in December, where our meetings will be anyway, right? Whether it's, happens to be on that meeting night or in that, like, the following week or something, in that... Because as we're building out the December agenda, if, if the agenda's relatively light outside of budget, right? It's like a 30-minute presentation, plus they might enlighten that overall budget discussion. Plus, we'll be coming out of like the VSBA stuff, which will be budget-driven. There might, you know, they might be able to offer some, you know, a tool that will be like, oh, this will be perfect for our December.
I just feel like people's interest will not be there that week before Christmas and the holidays. I, I...
It wasn't last year either.
So I guess the question is, you know, do we want to have a discussion while we're building the budget or after we've built the budget? And just invite them to, if they like to weigh in while we're building it, to come to our meetings.
Can we put, warn it? So I think... Honestly, one thing, big thing we heard is we don't have meetings on the other side of the town. Can we have like, one meeting here where, like, in November, we have the meeting here, in December, our meeting's over there?
Well, the problem, part of the problem is, is that the select board meets on Tuesday nights at 6 o'clock.
Well, then we all decide we warn it on a Wednesday, I don't know, but I, I, that was their biggest downfall.
So I'm just saying, we can't, we can't have one over there.
So like, instead of having another movie, meeting, let's, let's have it over at that, their place, and not have a separate meeting.
So I guess the question is, when?
Our place, but over there.
Are we having that while we're building the budget or after we've...
I mean, we can, everybody's welcome here.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But, and that's the, that was my issue last year, like, it's not like we have closed meetings, ever. Everybody's always welcome. So, do we get out somehow better out? Like, do we get a plane that flies by Rutland Town that says, you know, our school board meetings, once? It is expensive, sorry, I was just joking. You know, like, our meetings are once a month on the, you know, second Tuesday of the month, like... And then we just have one meeting, or alternate next couple of meetings, like, here or there, here, you know? It'd be closer for Mike, I think he would like it.
Well, I do know, in the circle, lots of times, our meetings didn't even make...
They're not on the, they'll list the calendar.
I know, it's not on the same wavelength.
But I, I just, I don't, we had a lot of extra meetings last year for the same four people, five people, right?
Five and a half, yeah.
Five and a half, right? I, I do not think we need to have more people, like, we are putting our time out there, and people know that our time's out there. So I, either we tell them our time, that we're here, and we meet them over there. I just...
It's going to be the same people that come again this year.
It is, but at least we can say we had it over on, on the west, is it west side? The west side of Rutland Town. I don't know.
Tina? Yes. I was, I'm glad that Abby brought that, that was going to be my question. I received a lot of positive feedback when we did go to Center Rutland, and a lot of great feedback, Colin, when you just broke things down on tax dollars. Like Louis does a great job as well, but you gave like real examples, and we, a lot of people were like, "Can he do this at every meeting?" And you just broke it down, like, "If we were to cut this, this is what it would look like. This would be if you had a $300,000 house, this is what it would be on your tax dollar." So a lot of people had given us feedback on those two things. Maybe it will be the same people.
But at least we're showing that we're giving them...
So are we, just January that we're talking about this? After we, you know, come up with our finalized budget? Or...
No, I would say we start talking about November, right, you said?
November, November would be the best month, I believe. November would be the best.
Yeah.
Because you have opportunity in October to have good discussions. December is a little bit too late, but, so you have a meeting in November, whether it be partnered up with our regular board meeting or a separate meeting, you can make adjustments. We then can come back and discuss those adjustments in December, because really in January, we should be looking to finalize a budget.
So my question is, do we need an extra meeting if we're going to be discussing, you know, just inviting the public to come to those meetings and say, "This is what, we are talking about priorities at our October meeting. We are discussing the first draft of the budget at the November meeting. We would love to have your feedback and thoughts on it. Please come to the meetings." Or...
I'm fine with that, personally.
Did you follow similar model you do during the summer? Where you have a shortened or condensed board meeting, like, say 30 minutes, and then the rest of the meeting is budget workshop in November?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking.
An hour and a half, 90 minutes to work on, and feedback. And if there's a presentation that you would like, you know, Louis and I to do around cost drivers, which, you know, you know, there's things we can do as well.
And I think once we know what our budget is, then that's when it's important to communicate that and go to west, west side of Rutland Town and...
Rutland Town, so Rutland Town.
Yeah. Right.
And just so the board understands, one thing that we will have to continue to publicly stress is that we are in negotiations currently with support staff, and we will be entering negotiations with teaching staff as well. So, we know that, hopefully, the support staff will be settled by the time the budget is finalized, but there's a chance that teachers may not be settled by that time, so... Just understand that there's some speculation there that has to occur. We can talk about the impacts of the bargaining agreements on the budget, and what we budget at, and what we settle, that might be two different things, and the impact it may be.
Perfect.
But that's important for us to talk about. What's that?
Perfect.
All right.
Well, right, but, but that's just the reality of budgeting, because, you know, the reality, I think 80% of our budget is going through.
So...
I, I think, you said October?
October at our board meeting.
Here.
We're doing priorities.
Yep. I say November there.
I can look into, I, I can look into it.
On the other side of our town.
I can look into it, but if they have...
Our other place.
Our other place.
But we can't, it's not easy for us to move our meeting if they already have a meeting.
And we have to...
And we have to...
Wherever we go, we have to be able to provide a virtual option if requested.
Yeah, we were able to last time.
Yeah, so I just want to make that's all.
Right, but if they're using it because they have their meeting, that's like...
Yeah, I would just say, like...
They have their meeting tonight, they meet on Tuesdays, and I don't think it's a good idea to move our meeting. And I need to get the dates into the circle by the 15th of September. So I can, I can look in, into that, I just, if they're already having a meeting, I don't think that it's wise to force it over there and figure out a different location or change the night. Because we can't do that with a meeting between now and September 15th.
So can you just ask them if we can be there a different day, if it works for Chris and everybody else? And then you can warn it by the 15th if they get back to you? Or pardon me, you could put it in the circle by then?
But if, if you put it in the circle by the 15th, is the circle coming out before December?
Yes.
About this one.
So this one comes out early October, and then the next one doesn't come out till early to mid-December. So...
When's our meeting, the 11th?
October?
I'm in November. I'm in November.
November 12th.
I'm on a Monday, that's right.
They have a select board meeting.
They do have a select board, yeah. So we can't, they, they have one already, and then Chris has a school board meeting.
Can they cancel theirs, since they have one every Tuesday?
On Wednesday and Thursday. Wednesday and Thursday that week already, too, so it's not-
So we meet on a Monday?
No, it's Veterans Day.
But I could have Lisa Madison attend one of those meetings if I needed to. She's, so it's-
I can have.
So, whatever, you know, whatever's best for the sport.
I just think it would show them a little-
So then, the November thirteenth meeting, you want me to see, or, the November twelfth, wanna see if we can move it to November thirteenth? If they have that availability, would that work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At Town Hall?
Yep. So if it doesn't, then we'll keep our meeting the twelfth. Does that work for everybody? And if it does work for them, then we'll, we'll have our, our meeting on the thirteenth at Town Hall, six P.M. And, um, just out of time-wise, we're really, I think, overtime a bit. Um, I just wanted to point out that- I, I'll get to you in just a second, Louis. In Chris's superintendent report, there's a lot of good information on here, um, questions to ask yourself when you're thinking about board priorities and the budget. So you might wanna save that and keep that in mind when you're thinking about what you wanna talk about next month. Louis?
Perhaps I misunderstood, but so are you trying not moving your November twelfth meeting to November thirteenth?
Correct. Are you a-
In case, if that's the same as well-springs, I would be presenting their budget that day.
So that's the other issue. Thank you, Louis. So that would be a bigger issue if Louis wasn't there to present our budget.
Sarah said she could do it.
I'm pretty sure Sarah did not say-
Colin is really good.
I'm happy to, I think, I mean-
No, I mean, I, we had a lot of meetings that unfortunately Louis couldn't attend all of them.
Well, Louis, we are bigger in size between the two of them.
Yeah, but our, our meetings on Tuesday-
We just say, we will get back to you if we don't have an answer.
Yeah, but, but Louis hasn't, well, this is him presenting it to us.
Alright, we can just take that away, we don't have to go over there. I ju, I mean, let's just keep it on the-
Would the sixth work of November? The Wednesday before? I'm good.
It could work.
Okay.
It's my husband's birthday, but, yeah. There's that.
We'll have to do that.
I works in Disney at Harry Potter.
You're what? You're not gonna be there, either?
I'll be there. I'm not gonna be in Harry Potter with Eric and Lisa.
You could be in San Francisco with my son.
He's my grandmother-in-law.
I could, I, I think I could still make the sixth work. Would the sixth work for you, Louis? We can't hear you, sorry.
The sixth, the sixth instead of the twelfth, that, that does work. It works, yes.
I can ask and see if that would work, it's fine.
If that's your husband's birthday, Tino is, oh, wow.
It's alright. We have plans to, a few days before that, so, it'll be fine.
That might be his birthday gift, too.
Alright, so I will just make-
Still have to ask the Select Board.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So I will be in touch with everyone once I find out. Okay. Thank you, Louis, for that. We're up to you now, anyway. End of year report.
So the end of year report was in the August board meeting as well, uh, in the packet. Um, I think you would ask, include it again, I don't know if there was questions you wanted me to answer.
Yeah, we tabled it, because you weren't here, um, to this meeting. I, I think, I think we wanted to hear your, at least, I, I personally wanted to hear your thoughts as recommendations of what to do with the surplus? What were the potential possibilities, what we could do with it?
Okay, so yeah, as you can see, I mean, we ended with a pretty large surplus, four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. Not all of that anticipated at the time that we were looking, we were looking at surplus, but not this large. I mean, when we have surplus, we have two options. One, we can give it back to the taxpayers in the following year budget, uh, so this would go into the FY twenty-six budget as revenue. Or we can ask the taxpayers to use it for something else. Typically, you would ask to put it into a capital reserve fund, or, or some other, um, some other use like that. The, always the issue with putting, giving it all back as revenue, i- is the same issue that the state's gonna have this year, is, it's one-time revenue, so then the following year, uh, you have to have that same revenue, otherwise you're starting that much in the hole. And, and Colin, uh, touched on that earlier. So the state used sixty-nine thou, sixty-nine million in revenue last year to help lower taxes. And so now, this year, going into FY twenty-six, that one-time revenue of sixty-nine million's not available. So they're going, we're going into FY twenty-six at the state level with a sixty-nine-million-dollar hole. Um, so if we, if we use this all as revenue, we would be sort of doing the same thing, uh, to a lot smaller scale, but still four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand is a, a big hole to make up. Um, we also know that, uh, with S R going away, less grant funds, we're, we should start seeing smaller surpluses. So, to, to, to have a surplus that large this year, uh, i- is unimaginable, uh, unless something extraordinary happens. So, so my recommendation would be to use, obviously, some of it to, to lower taxes and give back to the taxpayers as a revenue. Uh, that'll help our education spending go, going into this budget season. But then also to put an article on the ballot, like we have now passed, to ask to put some of that in the capital reserve fund. Uh, there is one other option, too, we could put it all into, as a revenue, but then also put in an expense, a one-time expense. So, uh, let's say, we know we have a lot of capital missing, because we could put, and I'm just gonna throw out a number, say, two-hundred, uh, two-hundred-thousand-dollar additional line, expense line to do one-time capital repairs, with the intention of taking that expense line out the following year. So it's a one-time revenue, we'll also have a one-time expense to offset it. That following year, the revenue goes away, but also, so does that expense line. Uh, the benefit of doing that, as opposed to putting a separate item on the ballot, is if that item gets voted down on the ballot, then you don't have any capital money. Uh, whereas if you put it in the budget, uh, it, it's just a piece of a larger budget.
And then, um, our capital improvement fund right now, it's what's on this page, plus fifty thousand, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So when this report was, this report was run as of June thirtieth, and at that time, the new, uh, allocation had not been put in yet.
We'd have to spend it by year-end, though, right?
Spend, wha, to which piece?
The expense?
Adding that one-time expense in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, that would be, uh, just so, for that fiscal year. So if we were to put that into FY twenty-six, then we would have FY twenty-six to spend that expense.
Because that, if not, it'll just roll onto another surplus.
Correct. But I mean, as you can see from-
The five-year plan.
Kelly's five-year plan, there are some years there that are, have some pretty large expenses, so we could identify those items and, and make sure that they're taken care of in the year that we put that one-time expense in.
So, um, Louis, his five-year plan, um, everything that's in fiscal year twenty-five, is that already in our budget?
Uh, no, I believe he identifies on his, on his sheet, which ones are part of the budget, and which ones are not. So the ones that are not highlighted in the gray are part of the budget. The ones that are not highlight, the ones that are, I'm sorry, the ones that are highlighted are not part of the budget. So, like, update pre-K, it can guard an HVAC, uh, that's highlighted in dark gray, so that's not part of the budget. Uh, new sound system, that's not part of the budget. Uh, the twelve thousand for Ed AC heat pump in library is not part of the budget. Uh, the paving and other HVAC controls are not part of the budget. So, I mean, there's a lot in here for FY twenty-five that's not part of the budget, so those would either have to come out of the capital reserve fund, or they would have to move into the following year, uh, to FY twenty-six. Unless we're running a surplus at the end of FY twenty-five, and we decide that we wanna use those funds to, to knock off one of these projects.
So just to, just to make sure that I'm following you, if it's highlighted, it's not in the budget?
Yeah, so the, there's a legend at the top of the sheet, it says fiscal budget and then additional help. Uh, so if it's highlighted, it's considered additional help, which in, in his, um, in his, uh, sheet means that it's not part of the budget.
Can, can I ask a question on this? How come paving the bus area is on here? Doesn't Bedjo own the buses?
But we own the property.
Property.
Can they-
They're taking that tank out, too.
They are.
Does it need to be paved?
Yes. Right?
Yes.
So I see a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand for this year that wasn't in the budget, that we need to do. And I see a hundred-and-sixty thousand the following year, that isn't planned to be in the budget. So I, I concur, I think it makes sense to put a good amount into an expense item and try to get some of this, these things marked off the list.
Why does it need to be paved?
It's, it's very bumpy. I, I don't know why it needs to be paved.
Well, it's all rudded over there.
Yeah, it's very rudded.
I think Visbit, I'm trying to remember, because we talked about having Visbit come back again, because they looked at our pickup-drop-off area, so that, I'm, this is maybe four, four years ago now. Um, and then when Byron was, um, the road commissioner, he was hoping to, when the sidewalk was done, he was hoping to include bus paving, too, there, but that didn't happen.
Because of the water runoff.
Okay.
That's why he's gotta do that.
So what, will paving that area affect the stormwater, then?
So that's why it also stopped, because of the stormwater stuff.
So we don't actually know if we should do it, or can do it?
We would not be doing it now, no. We're wait, we, the storm runoff stuff, it's the same thing with the basketball courts out back, if all that stuff is dug up.
A hundred grand.
It's a hundred grand, yeah.
But I mean, that's why I was saying that Kelly should be part of it, do you want him to log back on, and he can talk a little bit about this?
Um...
I mean, we, I can-
Not specifically tonight, yeah. He's not feeling well, anyway.
Well, they make a, Fabians makes a, gets a crushed gravel. And you lay that down and spread it out just like you would, right, like a driveway?
Mm-hmm.
And then they roll it, and that stuff is compact.
It's like a sure pack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My daughter, it's what, my daughter has it, and they did it at my daughter's house.
Mm-hmm.
And it's like, done. I mean, that's, that's an option to offset.
I think that, that was put on hold because of the stormwater. But I would wanna check with Kelly again on that.
But all the stormwater stuff has to be done first.
Yeah, so we could, that could be potentially moved to a different year.
Yeah.
Or...
What, what do you, dollar-wise, what are you leaning towards, Louis? I'm, I'm a big fan of building it into the budget, one-time revenue, one-time expense. But what were you thinking for the breakup?
Uh, I think it's too early to answer that question, I think we need to see what the budget looks like. I mean, just looking at the things on the five-year plan, I think, I mean, definitely has to be north of a hundred thousand. But I think we need to take a, a look at what we used as revenue last year, uh, which we kept increasing that number, uh, because of the failed budgets. And we need to look at, see what other factors are impacting the budget. Um, I, I, I mean, I really think that we need to go into this budget, uh, with a, a budget that's close to the level funded as possible for education spending. So, uh, I think we should, we need to see what that factor is first, and determine how much we can kinda have for wiggle room after that.
Okay. So don't make any decisions tonight would be your recommendation.
Correct, I think, I don't think that's something we need to decide tonight, I think we have plenty of months to... Uh, we'll have the first draft, uh, in November, and by that time, we should have a good idea as to, to where we're leaning. There'll still be some items pending, but we should have a lot better idea after we plug all those numbers in. Uh, I mean, we don't know what health insurance is gonna come in at. I'm estimating double digits in my first round, until I hear otherwise.
I thought that they had said they were going to try to hold them steady for this year. Was that?
Oh, no.
I think that was just a rumor.
No.
They, when, what they said was that they're not, um, entering negotiations, they're keeping the negotiations steady. They're not, wasn't the rates that are staying steady.
Oh.
Yeah, it's part of the messaging that we need to get out, is what they said, we're not gonna, we're not gonna move that. That means they're not entering, the NEA's not gonna jockey who's paying for what. It didn't mean they're gonna hold healthcare flat. They're letting the mountain board arbitrarily jump up thirteen percent.
And I believe, yeah, I think it was higher than that.
A lot of people heard that, they're like, I heard, they're gonna flatline it, it's like, no, they're just not allowing us to negotiate who pays for it.
Right.
Do you, do you know, uh, do, do, do they use Blue Cross, blah, Blue Cross Blue Shield or MVP? Do you know which one? Blue Cross?
Who's that?
The NEA or?
We use Blue Cross.
We, the whole state is under, VHI is under Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Because they, I believe they went up about twenty percent or twenty-one percent, they were approved by the Green Mountain Care.
That's for, that's for the private market. Um, I know there was a memo that came from the state in the last few days, too, that doesn't specify what the, the rate increase is going to be, but it says that if the, the private market increases any indicator as to what our increase will be, then it doesn't look good. I mean, we're, we're part of a pool, so our, our rate increase could be, could be a lot different, um, but we don't have any of that data yet. I think as we get further into the fall, October, early November, we should start getting, hopefully, a, a sense as to, are we double-digit or not? Uh, but at, at this time, I have no data to go by, other than that memo that came out a few days ago.
Thank you, Louis.
My personal opinion is, and the voters told us last year, too, obviously, uh, everyone resoundingly supported the, the bond. And anything that gets chopped first is typically building stuff, so if we have some money, we should throw it back in the building. I'd also like to hear, as you're developing this, Louis, Sarah with her teachers, because we're cutting materials, we're cutting, we cut those asks, so those are the easy ones at the end of the road, is that we have this money for facilities, um, to do those things with that money.
The article that you had sent us?
Mm-hmm.
The guy was talking about all these smaller old schools that are close together, but, of course, they don't wanna give up their schools, so they wanna keep them, but they have all these old buildings, and they don't have the money to fix them. And there's like, I don't know how many high schools and stuff throughout the state of Vermont, where these buildings are so old. Where are they gonna get the money to, to, the future of this stuff?
There's a study that I was reading through our budget season, that the anticipated cost for buildings alone from the state of Vermont in education is like three billion dollars over the next seven years.
Yeah.
And we just saw Burlington, what, one-seventy? So, you know, this building's not that old, but we gotta take care of it.
Yeah, what we can do is take care of our own building.
If you need buildings fixed, you don't pave a parking lot, that's my opinion, when we get to that priority. I didn't make the priority list, but if you got a hole in the roof, you don't pave the, someone else's bus lot. Thank you, Louis, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Um, does anyone have any questions on the budget timeline, or the financial reports or audit?
No.
Good job.
Yep, thank you, Louis. Alright, um, up to consent agenda, um, I will entertain an approval of the warrants and the minutes together.
So move.
Thank you, Colin. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report, anything you wanna highlight, Chris, or are you good?
Uh, there are a few things, but I actually, um, let Sarah highlight around, around Lori Elliott and Pete Scheider. So if you want.
Sure. So, um, Lori Elliott is an amazing special educator here at Rutland Town School, and she was nominated for UVM Teacher of the Year, so she was celebrated and recognized at our in-service, our GRCSU in-service, and, um, she will be going to Burlington, uh, the end of November for recognition.
November seventh, Chris.
Yeah, huge congratulations to Lori, she's incredible. And when Chris, uh, came to me and said, you know, it's your turn, you're up, I, my response was, oh, no! Because I'm like, we have so many amazing teachers, um, in this building, and, ugh, that was a, a tough decision, a really tough decision. Um, in a good way, for sure, so very, uh, well- And, ugh, that was a tough decision, a really tough decision, um, in a good way, for sure. So very, uh, well-deserved. She's incredible. Uh, and then Keith Schneider, he received a grant from American Heart Association that will help purchase some jump ropes and, um, some equipment that can be used out at recess and for other grades. Uh, so we received that. There was a nice write-up, uh, in the Herald about that just before school started. And also want to give a shout-out to Katie McDougal, our amazing science, middle school science teacher. She partnered with a few master gardeners, Mary Ashcroft Billings being one of them, and
Is that yesterday?
They did that yesterday, yes. So there was, um, a picture in the paper today. And, um, the kids, I mean, the research that went behind, you know, they had clipboards and I, I did plan identification. I mean, they were, it's like college level out there, I tell you. Um, but the kids got their hands dirty and worked with two community members and perfect weather for it too. It just so happened. So the Herald was also here and snapped a few photos. And I got to sneak out and help them for a little bit, which was the highlight of my day, for sure.
So that will be in the paper tomorrow?
It was in the paper today. I posted on our Facebook page, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just a little bit of it, yeah. So a huge thanks to Katie for that and
The online paper.
Oh, it's on the online?
Oh, is it the online one? Okay. Yeah, Katie sent it to me last night.
Nice. Congratulations to them.
Yeah.
Back to the bidding. She is the teacher there or nominated for the teacher?
So we, she is the Teacher of the Year and then, um,
So, so University of Vermont, uh, asks each of the school districts, SUs, to nominate two individuals. Uh, so, you know, Lori and, uh, another individual, Steve Kanan, uh, were both nominated as GRCSU outstanding educators. And then they will go to the UVM, be recognized along with all the other outstanding educators in the state of Vermont. And then out of that pool, one individual will be selected, uh, as
Vermont.
Vermont outstanding teacher. So it is still, it's a, it's a nice accomplishment. It's a really nice ceremony. Um, so if any of you would like to attend, you're more than welcome to head up there.
What day is it?
Uh, November seventh. You actually should be getting a, an invitation as a board chair. But if you're interested in attending, just let me know. It's a nice little cocktail reception and then a nice ceremony, so.
Who decides out of the pool?
There, out of that pool, there's a, uh, group of individuals from UVM, past, uh, outstanding educators, who then will look at the, uh, the candidates and then they actually do site visits. Uh, once they narrow it down, they, you know, visit, they speak with the candidates, they, uh, talk with, you know, parents, community members, then baseball, that, and they select.
And grease their palms?
They don't have the money for that.
That's great.
Yep.
Congratulations to them.
Use some of that clay, but it'd harden up, so I might not get them anyways.
Real hard.
All right. Um, so principals report.
Sure. I note the agenda has changed just a little bit. If you, if you have any questions on what's there, I will, I mean, I added some celebrations, which is great. One thing that I, that I will just add is that we have had, um, a positive is that we have ten tuition students. I know Louis signed off, but, um, which is an increase. Uh, we did budget for that, but we, that's the largest number that we've had. I said last year, seven was the largest number. We're now at ten tuition students, which is huge and speaks volumes. Um, one thing that's been very challenging is the influx of homeless students, um, right before school starts and currently, and the significant needs of the students that are here and, uh, the resources from staff and including administration and everybody. Um, it is, it has been a lot. It's been a lot. And we are always looking for substitutes. Uh, we are looking for a par educator. We are still looking for a special educator in our building. And if anybody wants to sub, um, even if it's for one day, please contact Cindy at central office. Seven-seven-five-four-three-four-two.
I told my wife not to hang around in the morning because they'll put her to work.
Mr. Kevin Brown is a grandparent here now. I worked with him at Rutland High School, so I talked to him and his wife, and he's like, maybe he'll pop back in. I'm like, please.
Agreed.
Please, yeah.
Is he a math teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, Mr. Brown.
He just retired?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, and his wife worked in the school as well.
Nice.
Driver's ed.
Yeah, he taught me private driver's ed.
Can I, am I allowed to ask questions?
No.
Thoughts on the, um, eight thousand dollars still need for the eighth-grade field trip? Have they, um?
Um, so, yes, there, a lot of money needs to be raised in order for all students to go to Washington DC. This is a very large class and a large need. So it's up to families and students to fundraise. I did hear from a parent, there's, you know, there's, uh, one, I think, that you're leading. The parent had told me that can raise up to five thousand dollars, um, that's hopefully happening this fall, so.
Yeah, actually, I think the date we came up was, was November thirteenth. There might be a, um, a dinner and maybe silent auction or raffle up at Mountain Top to raise money for the eighth-grade class.
Yeah.
More information to come, but.
Yes.
Just know.
Yep.
We encourage all parents and students to get involved in fundraising. That's always the struggle.
It was a good, pretty good group at the Rutland Town thing there.
Yeah, this, um, select board is donating five hundred dollars from the town recreation fund or whatever was for the party, uh, because there were students that helped out from the class.
I just, so I, I'm not going to be everybody's favorite person with this next thing I'm going to say. There's fifty-two students, right?
Fifty now.
Fifty now. That's a fifty thousand dollar eighth-grade trip. That is like, if you put it in perspective, that is like asinine, honestly. Like fifty thousand dollars to send a group of fifth graders to a trip. I just, I'm like flabbergasted. I mean, I came, I just, I think when you put it in that perspective, I know we only have to fundraise, I don't know what our total was. It was over eleven, right?
Eight.
Is that an eighth grade and not a fifth grade?
Eleven thousand.
It was eleven, yeah.
It was eleven thousand.
Yeah.
So now we're down to eight. But when you put it, I mean, so take the, take away that eleven thousand, that's, I mean, think about the amount that parents are footing the bill for this.
And I mean, if the school board, it's, you know, at your discretion to say no, and it's a hu, it, it is a, a, it takes a lot of time for Sherry and myself, and it's a full week off, off for me, which I am
But like, how come?
I would be like, fine. I love the opportunity for kids, but it is a ton of work for, for me personally too.
But like, I know a lot of schools go and they stay in dorms. Like, I know a lot of the colleges in the area open up their dorms to ki, like, why is it, why are we spending, like,
With a tour company?
Fifty thousand dollars to go on an eighth-grade field trip?
And if parents want to do, I noted a few schools have done it on their own, like a few schools from around us. They've done that on their own time during like school vacations or whatever, and I am in complete support of that. Because again, it's a ton of work for Sherry and myself and parents too. Um, so previously, the board had a, there, there was a pause in the trip for a variety of reasons for a number of years. So when I first started here, it didn't happen anymore. Um, and the board at the time said, we will agree to it as long as you go with a company that provides insurance and as long as an administrator goes on the trip. And everybody can, can afford, can be given the opportunity. Because I guess years before, it's only if you could pay for it. And it wasn't in the budget. So if the board would, since it's an overnight trip, if you have
I just think, talk about fiscally, I mean, that's a lot of money we're asking people to pay.
And it is
I mean, my kid's going, I mean, my kid's going.
It is a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. And when you, right.
When you think about it, when you think about a big picture, we're spending fi- fifty grand to send a group of kids to DC where everything's free.
So I hear what you're saying, but the board did already approve it for next year.
I'm not
And it wasn't on the agenda, so if you don't mind, is it okay?
No, I just wanted, I just asked.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'd be happy to put it back on if you want.
No, I just, I just want people to think about it.
Yeah.
It's a ton of money. A ton of work.
All right. Um, so
I'm sweaty.
On the CIP plan.
Mm-hmm. Continuous Improvement Plan?
Yep.
Sure. So, um, we are not a title school, um, uh, but the other schools in GRCSU are, so they have to go through a pretty thorough process. So we were directed, um, that this year, we just wanted to kind of dust off some things based upon current data. Um, so I don't know if you want me to walk you through it or if you have any questions for Mike and I. Um, so it's the same areas that we're looking, and it's not, nothing surprising. So safe and healthy schools, I'll just highlight. So that behavioral referrals, decreasing those behavioral referrals, academic achievement, that goes without saying. Um, and then with MTSS, that's a new law process here. Um, so it's making sure we have those intervention layers to support our students. And we've asked our teachers that when they meet, um, all of our teachers have to meet with us to develop their yearly goals, that one of them needs to be aligned to the SIP.
So my question is, um, in the past, and I asked Lisa Madison the same question. In the past, um, other stakeholders other than employees were included in the formation of the CIP. I, I noticed that, um, you know, you put it in the end of your newsletter to families if they, you know, had any questions or comments they could get back to you. And I understand that that is one way to try to get, you know, some feedback. But I think that the CIP was already basically done at that point. It'd already been, you know, prepared. Um, and so I guess my hope is that next year, when we're doing this again, that there's a little bit more diversity of stakeholders like there has been in the past. And I think the hope was that was done in this type of setting. So like parents, board members, or, you know, community members kind of thing.
We were directed to dust it off and update, so that's what we did. But I, I mean, we've done it before. Usually, other years, we've invited students, because some students have said, it's the last thing I want to do. I have no interest in going, as I've shared with you. So we have done that in the past, but that was the direction to dust it off and then give, uh, community members an opportunity to ask questions. So we can do that in the spring, for sure.
And the SIPs were paused during COVID, and I think, uh, we received late notice from what SIPs may look like. And so the plan is obviously to move back to the pre-COVID process, which we would involve a variety of stakeholders and provide feedback and input in terms of what, uh, suitable goals or priorities would be, so.
And I think it is different for us because all the other schools have to follow that process because they receive title funds and we don't. So that's why when we had asked, like, do we need to include, and it was, you know, dust it off and just make sure it aligns with the SU goals.
Um, and then, anyone else have any questions for moving on? So then we'll move on to the FastBridge report.
Sure. Did you want me to present the FastBridge report or do you just, no, okay.
Well, um,
I got notes or I had, go ahead, nods, no, so you just tell me.
So at the SU level, it was brought up that it was good to show the public it.
Sure.
I believe.
Yeah.
So, and I know that last year, we had a lot of concerns about student achievement
Yeah.
academically, so I think it would be good to at least highlight where we're at.
This is spring, right?
Correct.
Just so people know that.
This is spring data.
Yep. This is from the end of the year.
Do you want us to go through each slide for the?
Just briefly.
So basically, our students are, um, this is meant for a screener. So it's given three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. Last year was the second year we've given FastBridge. Prior to that, we were given MAPS or NIWA. I forgot the, but MAPS and FastBridge. And then as an SU, we decided just to u- use FastBridge with all grades. So this goes, um, through what is considered flat, modest, typical, and aggressive growth. So these are our three assessments that are given in literacy. Um, and then these are our, um, our earliest learners. And what Mike and I really look at is we really look at growth overall. We all want kids to grow. So we, we look at modest, typical, and aggressive. So this is for, um, K-one. And then, um, CBM is grades two to three. So this is just fall to spring. If you need me to pause or expand, please stop me.
Okay.
And please interrupt me, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay. Auto-reading is grades four through nine. This is the timed one?
What's that?
This is the timed one, which is the one that
Yes, correct.
Yeah, this is the, the time, one that sometimes makes some kids anxious.
Just they have like a few seconds to choose the right word.
Three seconds.
And it goes green, yellow, red, and then it moves on. So it's kind of a, it's a bit of a panic-inducing thing.
Yeah.
And do they, um, in a classroom setting, do they even practice in that capacity in any way? You know what I mean?
Practice.
How do they prepare for something like that? Like, if it's like,
Right.
You know, it's like, hey, you got to get to the end of the block. But I need, you know, now you need to get to the end of the block in twenty seconds or whatever.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Like, it's all those basic sound letters. So it's everything that they do, like, that they should be able to do with automaticity. So it's, it's like running for, it's like you practice to run to five K and at the end, you try to beat your time. Do you know what I'm saying? You practice all year long about, you know, the spelling and the sounds and all that, and that's what that one, just making sure, because the, the more
Okay, so it's not like a multiple choice where they're like reading
No, 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 no.
Trying to answer that in, in twenty seconds time or something.
And it's test-taking skills, and that's why I think we pride ourselves, and Mike does an amazing job with EST, and teachers come prepared with data and talk about kids. Sometimes they're like, you know, test anxiety. We've had kids that do worse the second time, and it's like, this is a screener. It's not gonna tell you if you're getting into Harvard or not. Just relax, you're in third grade. But, you know, sometime, some of our kids put a lot of pressure on themselves and some family members do too, so this is meant to be a screener. And our kids are testing this week already. I was like, oh, here we go, here we go. Um, and then this is A-reading, starting with second grade. Overall reading, um, achievement, metrics reading achievement.
This is more like what you were talking about, Tim. Uh, the A-reading one is like, you get, you read a paragraph or a section and then you have multiple choice, not timed.
That is. Sarah, I think the important thing to, I'm sorry, but like, to jump in, but
No.
when you have kids that are super high in your advanced skills, they're, you're not going to see typical or aggressive growth in there.
Right.
You know, so sometimes those, those, those growth things are skewed because you might have like ten kids that are already at the top and one point puts them actually at like a flat growth or modest. So it comes in the red, you know, that you would think is not good, but it's actually, can't do much better on it than they are.
And these scores right here are pretty, I mean, twelve percent of your kids, obviously, we don't want flat growth, but like you said,
But those could be.
And that's like minimal. If you're talking about, I'll just say, Mike and I were definitely sending some of our teacher friends and other school districts in other parts of our states, and I won't say their responses back when I was like, check this out.
But again, that twelve percent could be your top kids.
Yeah.
Or not much growth can happen.
I didn't use MAP, but I think one thing MAP used to do was the quadrant.
Yes, yeah.
Sort of on the quadrant, which was like, yeah.
I miss the quadrant too.
Bottom left was like low growth, low achievement, right? And then like high growth, low achievement, et cetera, all around. You want them in like the top right, if ideal, but this doesn't show that.
I'm not an educator or a wordsmith, but what does flat growth mean? Just out of curiosity, because it's
The sun, the sun is over there and it's growing.
It means that they were
Read up that phrase, just so I know.
They, FastBridge made it.
So it's like first through fifteenth for sun.
Percentile. So that means that, uh, when they do a percentile of growth, it's how well, how much did they grow compared to peers their age? So if I had like second percentile of growth, I did as well as or better than growth. Two out of one hundred kids my age taking this assessment. And that's how I averaged that. So they just, they made the categories, FastBridge.
No, I'm just wondering about that specific phrase.
Yeah.
Was it a short, tall person?
Yes. And Mike does a good job. He uses that example with parents.
I don't know who call it flat to start, but they, that's what they get.
Flat same, okay.
Well, I mean, I get what flat means, but
There's no growth if it's flat.
They don't work together.
Yeah.
Okay. So here are our math assessments. So we have early math and A-math. Kindergarten through first grade. Second through ninth. Second through ninth. And then Mike and I just put some few things in here. I won't read all of these, but here are some, some things to brag about. And continuing concerns, we're always looking for ways to obviously reduce that, that flat growth.
And I think if we go to the back a few, just to the early math one, Abby, I think this is a situation really we're talking about. Because if on the left side you see that such high achievement there, your flat growth will be higher because they are achieving. I know we still want them to grow, obviously, but they're just not as much because they're already at a high amount of achievement.
I do like how you guys are focusing on growth instead of, you know, I do like that. Because I think that sends a great message to students when you're talking about it in your, you know, your, you know, teacher, parent teacher conferences, they're always talking about their growth and not just the number. So I like that.
Wasn't there some determination here that talked about the high achiever growth? Is that we talked about that last week? Can Dave strap some data or no? We gotta make that up.
We were here last week, so.
And the SU board, because we did the whole FastBridge. She talked about one slide and I obviously got it, but she talked about how, she like dove in like how that just the point of like our high achievers had really high growth too. I don't know where that was or how she pulled that out. I just remember her saying that. That was like a talking point we had, I don't know.
Have to go back and flip through the slides.
Yeah, I'll pull it up, but it was, because it kind of hit what we always talk about, but I just remember her saying that last week. Sorry to talk out of context.
And these are some things for next steps. Obviously, we ask teachers to bring data to our supervision evaluation meetings. It happened a minimum of three times per year. Formally, obviously walkthroughs and formal observations. Our multi-tiered systems of support. And then Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about the instructional PLCs? We met with our PLC leaders yesterday and.
Yeah, so during that, we've aligned some PLC time for teachers to be able to use a protocol to talk about their instruction and data as well. And so that's, that structure setup, we met with PLC leaders. We talked about, we tied it in with the SIP as well. And some of the strategies that are laid out in that will be kind of the themes for those as well. So those will happen like roughly once a month or so. We have a kind of a theme for every week of PLC, like once faculty meeting, et cetera. So yeah, we talked to PLC leaders yesterday. So that's another way that they're gonna be able to live and kind of share their expertise. It can be pretty easy in a school, as you know, to sort of be in your own bubble, in your own classroom, in your own world, down your own wing kind of thing. And this is a way for them to be able to kind of share expertise with each other. Yeah.
And we have so much talent here in the building. And we have heard that, that they really want time to work with each other because there's so much expertise. So we're making it happen. And obviously through professional development too. So here's some group screening reports. So this compares the district to Rutland Town School. Here's CBM reading. Four through nine auto reading. A-reading again, Rutland Town is on the right. And our early math. A-math. And that's it.
Thank you.
Sure. Are there any questions?
Screen.
As I said, very proud, always looking for ways to improve, but bragging rights.
All right. Vacancies are in your board packet. Take a look at those. I think Sarah already kind of glossed over looking for another peer educator, you said, and a special educator. And then Chris, I don't have, even though I tried to have it in my computer fix, it's still not working here. So I don't have your goals and I don't see them in the packet. Would you mind sharing those with?
Yeah, I'll drop them in right now.
Thank you. It wouldn't help if you dropped it in because I can't see it.
What's that?
Or for later, yes.
Sarah, for our budget presentations, can we have those highlights? Yes, Ed. Four points.
From FastBridge? Yeah.
That's because that's the counter we're hearing is our kids are failing or the letters to the editor and all this BS, like here's the data.
Give us screen share.
Oh, sure, thanks.
Okay, I have to share my Sarah book.
Sorry, I didn't mean to make it more complicated.
It's okay.
I just don't have anything to read off.
They're supposed to be in there.
So while Chris is setting this up, the supervisory union board approved some superintendent goals for Chris throughout the year. And I just wanted to share them with this board and the Rutland Town community so that they, you know, what, know what we're having Chris kind of work on.
So Chris sent goals he wants to change or are they?
It was a combination of Chris and the SU board. It's a collaboration of creating SU goals.
Strategic plan based, so he's, you know, our goals, he's tasking his goals off of what our goals are for him. So he can, we can quantify and qualitative them.
Thank you. So goal number one, by June 2025, the percentage of students scoring proficient or higher on the Vermont CAP or BCAP.
BCAP.
Yeah, BCAP. State math assessments will be improved by 5% by implementing targeted interventions and data-driven instruction. And goal number two is very similar in that hope to improve the literacy assessments by the same amount. Goal number three, by June 2025, increase the percentage of students demonstrating modest to aggressive growth on the FastBridge assessment in math and literacy by 10% through targeted professional development, data-driven instruction, and tailored interventions. Sorry, my eyes are very dry.
It also is very little.
And it's small.
I'm impressed you can read it.
Um, goal number four, by June, whoops, by June 2025, in working with building administrators, the school culture and climate will be enhanced by documenting and implementing at least three building level strategies and administering the GRCSU School Culture and Climate Survey in spring of 2025. The aim is to improve the positive response rate on these surveys by 10% by June 2026 by implementing social emotional learning programs and inclusive practices. And then goal number five, by March 2025, support the school board in enhancing budget communication with stakeholders by developing and implementing a comprehensive budget communication plan. The plan will include clear timelines, accessible budget documents, and multiple communication channels. For example, board meetings, newsletters, social media, et cetera. The success of this initiative will be measured in stakeholder understanding and satisfaction with the budget process as reflected in post-budget feedback surveys. So those are the five goals and I'm very proud of them and very happy that Chris was willing to put in a lot of work on that too with us, so.
And I think with goal five, this is where I really need support of the boards because the communication is going to be supporting the boards. And so we look at community forums, we talk about, you know, what Rutland Town needs to hear will be markedly different than say Wells or Middleton Springs. You know, there, there'll be some common, common contents around, you know, drivers, you know, just we look at tuition, we look at the CLA. But I think we really have to tailor each message for each community. And I think that's just something which we just need to work with. I know that my goal would be that October GRCSU board, we need to have a bit of a timeline. And I'll be honest, obviously, when I said, you know, November, because November is on this draft timeline that I had put back in terms of when we really need to start presenting some information to the community and start getting some feedback on this. But I think that's, it's important, you know, as the board discusses or you think about just items that you would like myself or Lewis to address. It's important because we're not gonna just wait till that one-page flyer right before, because oh, I think we have to be more proactive. And but what that message is, I think just we need to understand what you feel it needs to be and what you'd like us to communicate and how we're gonna work with you, so.
The FAQ that you had said you and Lewis were breaking on, when is the?
I can have a draft of that in, for October for both the SU and local board to take a look at.
That'd be great, thank you.
And it goes from very, right now it is very general, but I think there are opportunities for questions because I know that you'll hear more from community members, neighbors about things that they ask to go, well, you know, just that we could address and maybe a Rutland Town focus. So for each board, that FAQ may look a little bit differently because the questions that Rutland Town may be asking, you know, and last year I think the big question, well, one of the questions was about, why are we paying for, you know, states? Or all of our money is going to Montpelier and we're not getting anything back. And it just addressing some of these fallacies and misconceptions. But also understanding that, you know, the Rutland Town board is, you know, working with a largely fixed budget. And there are a lot of things out of your control. And, you know, what can be moved, what can't be moved. And so despite what others say.
Thank you. All right, so circle communication, we've already kind of discussed. I'm going to work on November 6th and just let them know that they're always welcome at school board meetings and let me hear from them, their concerns. Moving on to policy, there were three policies here for first read. There was a discussion on H4 at our SU meeting. And I, I'll be honest, I was the one that started the discussion a little bit. Thank you, Colin. So my, the reason I had concerns about this one is I found it to be very confusing. I don't know if everyone has a copy of it. It, it's discussing distribution of non-school-sponsored literature in schools. And this was based off of the VSBA model policy. I thought that under administrative responsibilities, number one, that it was very confusing to have non-school-sponsored literature associated with literature from parent-teacher organizations, which is still technically a school-approved group. And it was just a little unclear in that, that whole section. And then I also, at the end, it uses the word imprimatur. I'm trying to find it, I think it was E on the second page. And I had no idea what an imprimatur was. And I don't think any of the other board members knew what an imprimatur was.
It's important.
Yeah. So Colin and I looked it up. And when you do look it up online, the first thing that comes up is it's associated with the Roman Catholic Church. Then a second definition is basically, it means like implied consent. So for instance, if your school has a ball field and there are banners up around the ball field, you know, booster banners, which is exactly what Mike Rowe was talking about today, that the school would have some say as to what is on those banners. Because it is assumed that since it's on school property and it's hung around our school field, that the school is giving its endorsement of it, of having it there. So that's basically what it means. So it's like implied consent because of its location.
Gotcha.
All right. So the reason that I did not vote for this to move it to first read was because I thought that section was confusing, number one, under administrative responsibilities. And I wanted the word imprimatur maybe reworked so that it was a little bit more in the common vernacular so that when, you know, any, any.
vernacular is a good vocabulary as well.
I know, you're.
Common language, yes. So that when, you know, anybody picked this up, they would have a better understanding of what that was, what that meant. So I did a little research since that meeting and I found another policy from the Central Vermont Supervisory Board, which I seem to have lost. Yeah. Okay, maybe this was mine. So it was very similar to ours and it was just recently updated in October of 2023. And not only did it remove that confusion, confusing section of number one, under administrative responsibilities, but it also included talking about E newsletters and electronic means of getting literature out to the public, which I thought was actually something I hadn't thought of, but makes sense.
Yeah.
It still does have the imprimatur, so I would still like to, I, I still think it's a good idea to make that a little easier for people to understand.
That person.
Yeah.
That one person.
Listen, we kept that in there so that people would look at that and then dive deeper into what that was asking. So just to bring more light and research to.
To this policy.
To this policy, yep.
So the, the SU board did move all three of these to first read, which is why they're on our policy. But we as a board have the option to move two of them or none of them or all of them. But I, I would love to present this other policy to the SU board and have them reconsider given that this current policy as it stands that they approved so far as a first read doesn't include any electronic means of messaging. And I think seeing this other option is just a little bit clearer and easier to understand. And if they are going to update it again, if they would reconsider the imprimatur and just have maybe change it to implied consent or implied endorsement.
I will not vote for that, neither will Jeff. We're keeping it imprimatur in there. Just kidding.
So I will entertain a motion on the policies.
Now, do you move it back to the GRCSU first?
Yes, because right now, I don't think that we, since we've changed the order.
Yes.
I don't think that, I think that the SU board has to decide if they're gonna send it back to policy to rework it or just change it there or do nothing and just have a school. I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen, right, Chris?
Correct. I mean, that's, I think that's where part of the supervisory union is around the alignment of policies, but there is a discussion around if one board does not like a policy and that's, the SU board has to really have a discussion about that in terms of what happens next. But in the past, you're right, we get caught in this loop or this cycle where things get kicked back to policy, if we brought back out and then kicked back again. And so, right, if we brought back to SU board for discussion.
Does the policy committee meet?
We meet every fourth, third, the last Monday of the month, whatever that is.
Yeah.
The fourth Monday of the month.
If there's enough things.
I was saying, is there any way to have a, we can't do anything with this until it goes back to the?
SU board.
Yes, go back to SU board.
But they do nothing.
But, but they, they can do something there, they don't have to send it back.
I mean, you're a member of the policy committee, right? So, I mean, you're aware of the discussion.
Yeah, but I don't think I can bring it up in discussion until it goes back to the SU board for them to kick it back to us. It's, they changed, since I've been on there, they changed, just recently changed that, that loop of when it goes.
Seems to work better, I think.
In general.
I think this might be the first one that's going, could be potentially going back for.
And this was, this is a new policy that we have?
We don't have.
This is not a required policy.
But we have procedures currently in place that aren't impeding at least what?
Yes.
I don't, I haven't pulled up and had anyone soliciting me with things that.
Yeah. Yeah. So a lot of these are just dealing with large variety of hypotheticals, I don't know, situationality. And imprimatur is if you have a shared facility and so someone's hanging like a, you know, like a Bud Light sign, you know, about to, for a softball tournament, you know, sponsored by Bud Lights and it's on school property, then we are, you know.
But we're saying Bud Lights.
By definition, that we are supporting Bud Lights. You know, Bud Light's not a great beer, so it's, I'm, I'm not happy about supporting it.
When I worked for uh.
It's a good money, they're a good beer.
When G. House was around, they delivered here, you know, Bud Light's their drop one time, one time.
Years ago, before we had the sign out front out here, we had a sign out there for something we had rented a marquee for, for something, no matter what it was. And one of my fellows that works at night changed the wording out there and said, free beer. And you wouldn't believe the people that rolled in here looking for the free beer at a school.
Why get people here for the budget?
That's right.
I bet we get a lot more today than we did back then too, because we drugs.
It was kind of funny, but it wasn't kind of, but the principal wasn't overly happy.
I think we could get a chuckle out of Sarah.
You don't have the budget for that, so can't afford that.
All right.
So I mean, I, I'm fine with, with this info, with the new information and I'm fine having the discussion one more time with the SU at least.
And what about the other two policies?
I thought they were fine.
So is your motion to move F three and H five to second read? And H four, send back to the SU to discuss? Is that your motion? Thank you, Tim.
That's why I was asking the question because I didn't know how to make the motion.
So.
I mean, I voted it down too at the SU level and I don't know if you guys know me that well. I don't care that much um, about details and policy, but it is one thing of governance that we do at the board level. And if we're going to add something new, some of the comments at the board level at that level were like, oh, well, if it, if we got to fix it in a year, we're fixing it. Like, then why are we doing it? Let's do it right the first time.
Yeah.
Um, it's diligent crap work, in my opinion, but um, send it back and do it right. Include everything it needs to be. We don't need to talk about it for half an hour, but why just do something to have to change it in a year if it doesn't encompass everything we need? Especially for adding it, that we really don't need to. I'd rather not have it at all. That's why I said no.
Thank you, Colin. So all in favor of Tim's motion?
Right.
Right.
You name it. Thank you, board. All right. Next meeting, um, so future agenda items are right here. I just wanted to let this board know. Chris had sent out an email to board chairs today, um, asking that if there are requests for information um, or, you know, things that you would like from central office, so please try to bring it up at a board meeting. So this would be the good time to bring up anything that.
So, so the, the premise of this is during budget season, we'll get a lot of individual requests and a lot, sometimes they're conflicting. And so just out of transparency, make sure that board members receive the information at the same time. I just had asked that, you know, while, you know, I have no problem with the request, but it should be one discussed at a meeting and the board should say, okay, here are the five things we'd like for October and then the board will all receive that at one particular time as opposed to throughout the course. Because if, say Jeff makes a request and I send the information to Jeff, then Jeff has this information that the other board's not privy to and having a discussion. And so just try, try to make things, it's transparent and uh, more, better, more discussions. So it's just trying to align that problem.
So anybody have anything?
Free beer? Requests?
You gotta go back down the SU office.
All right. Our next meeting will be October eighth at six PM at the library at Rutland Town School. And we are looking at the Rutland Town School Board Budget Workshop at our next, following meeting, November sixth, potentially, at the Town Hall in Center Rutland.
Tina, will that be six o'clock?
Yes. Pending approval by the select board and town clerk. And I see no public on, online and none in the room, so, and we do not need an executive session. So good in welfare. Anyone have anything to add?
I do. Um, when we were watching the Olympics, not in San Francisco, um, but at home, Augie asked when Rutland Town Olympics started, um, this winter, um, because he was so excited to.
Snowboard.
Snowboard. He told you about that. So he, um, he is now calling it Rutland Town Olympics.
Instead of Lifetime Sports.
Instead of Lifetime Sports.
I like that. Very nice.
So, um, just, he was, he's super excited about doing it, so that's exciting.
And my kids have had a great start to the school year, so thank you Rutland Town Community. And I'm very proud of um, the work that Keith Schneider put into getting a extra grant for our gym program and all the work that went into that and helping the kids get better at jumping. And also to Lori Elliott, congratulations, really proud of you and excited for you.
I just want to, I made the decision to drive school bus again.
Again?
Again. So I am back driving R1. Lot of work that needs to be done there, but I had a real touching moment this weekend. Soccer, one of the girls that I drove, but she was yay high. I now have, excuse me. I have her children in the same house that I'm picking up. It's, it was very touching for me.
That's cool.
That's very cool.
And my grandson doesn't like kindergarten. He loves kindergarten. So.
Me too.
He's on top of the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, well, I'm happy to welcome Colin to the coaching ranks of uh, young children with lots of energy and uh, a fair attention span, so. No, it's been good. And uh, it was exciting to watch uh, Sophia and Wes both play their first, well, not their first, but play uh, first middle school soccer games of the season and Wes's first as a sixth grader playing up with a eighth grade team. So they look good out there. Kudos to the eighth grade boys for supporting that younger crew, so.
I get to walk a pair of twin three-year-olds into pre-K every day, so that's exciting. Well, I did the first couple of days, my wife does, but they're excited every day to get up and go to school. Uh, the atmosphere, the energy in the first couple of weeks has been great. As, just like we never stopped from last year, so kudos to you, Sarah and everybody. Teachers are so welcoming, walking right in the door. And just three-year-olds that barely know anybody, now they feel like it's home here. I am coaching third and fourth grade boys, so we grab them after school, we walk up to Northwood, uh, mild neighborhood actually, and Tredon's have a pond. I can't promise one of the kids won't get thrown in the pond. By me, not by one of the friends. It's wrecked.
It's wrecked.
But we're having fun. We had a good heart-to-heart today. Again, and uh, we're realize why I can't be a teacher.
Watch Mr. Schneider out there. It's incredible. I mean, he will have, yeah, we were short on subs as usual and he will group kids together and his ability to manage a lot of little people is just incredible. Yeah. So if you want some tips, feel free to uh, come sub and watch him.
And not to get emotional either, Jeff, but I mean, it just, it bring, it like full circle for me now that all my kids are here and I'm on board and you know, I passed through a lot of different schools, universities, but like here it feels home and walking through the halls, the teachers feel like family and it's I'm blessed that my kids can do the same thing I had and, and still remember my teachers and watching Miss Mullen retire last year, but still seeing Patty Swinier teaching the other third grade who I had way back when and seeing all the compassion and watching them sculpt all of our young minds is seeing you. Quite fantastic, so we're off to a good start.
Okay, well, we are at the end of the meeting, so I will call this meeting adjourned at eight oh two PM.